Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the committee of the whole meeting of February 2nd to order and ask for approval of the agenda with the inclusion of the supplementary information on the Yellow Pages. Moved by Counselor Parkinson and seconded in by Counselor Logans. Any errors or omissions? There's just one in the spelling of our chair's last name. It's J-E-N-S-E-N, the Danish spelling. So, on that note, all those in favor, motions carried. So, this evening, we welcome members from the Capital Regional District to do a presentation today on the Regional Sustainability Strategy. I'd like to begin by introducing the CRD Chair, Mr., his worship, Nils Jensen, the Mayor of Oak Bay. And perhaps Chair Nelson can introduce the team that will be presenting to council today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I will do that once we get to a couple of slides in. Your worship and honorable counselors, thank you very much for inviting us here. And I really appreciate this opportunity to tell you about the CRD and some of its successes and some of its challenges. And also, we're going to talk a little bit about the finance and funding and then the RSS, the Regional Sustainability Strategy. And I will introduce, as soon as we get going here, in a couple of slides. And so, it's almost like a bit of an orientation, too. So, it's a kind of a combination. And you may feel like it's maybe a little bit of a travelogue and rah rah, isn't CRD great? And it feels like that. It's because it should be like that, because this is your CRD and we're all in this together. And so, it's a fairly small group, so if there's any questions that you have and you want to interrupt, I don't have like a set presentation. And it usually takes us about an hour, an hour and a half, sometimes an hour and 20 minutes. And then, we, you know, we can leave some time for questions during and after. So, thank you very much. So, one of the themes that, for this, for this discussion about CRD and introduction to CRD, is that it's big and beautiful. It's large, that's the big part. It's diverse, and it's also complex. And particularly when we get, you'll see the complexity when we get to the financial aspects. And we're going to be handing out some financial sheets at that point. But just to give you an idea, I'll give you a kind of a little reveal. This is, you'll see this, this will be a CRD on a page. And the number of services that we provide, the CRD provides across the breadth of the communities, it's over 200. So, that gives you an idea of the complexity of it and accounting for it. Let me see if I can use the technology. There you go. So, the region here, I mean, it's massive in terms of the size. I mean, you, there you go. You can see this portion alone is, almost makes up the half of the CRD. But there's islands, there's 13 member municipalities, and they, they scan, you know, they cover the, the whole set, right from urban to rural and some communities that are a little bit of both. And that is something you want to keep in mind for when we go through the Regional Sustainability Strategy, is trying to balance all of those interests. Because us in Oak Bay, we don't have a lot of farmland. I think we have one farm right on the water, which is a long story in itself. But we, so we don't have a lot of areas to build out. So, we have certain visions through our official community plan. And certainly, when you go to an area like Machozen, they have a very different vision of their community. And so, it's trying to reconcile all of that. We have 11 First Nations, and I want to stop by saying how much I appreciate your worship for agreeing to participate. We set up recently a special task force, three emissaries, if you will, going out to the First Nations, because we want to do what we can to include them in our CRD governance structure and see what the options are. And Mayor Tate has graciously agreed to be part of that. We have a mayor from Central Sandage and a counselor from Victoria. And that, but that's just one of your duties. I know you've agreed to do other things at the CRD. We appreciate that. But one factor here that's, that it can't be lost on us, or shouldn't be lost, as we're doing, have you got a better laser pointer? I was told that there's a better laser pointer. This isn't a terribly good one. Let's see. Oh, this is the one. This is the one I forgot, I think, in Central Sandage recently, but we retrieved it. So, this, these two numbers here, we're about 371 now, and we're going to 471. So, that's 100,000 people are going to come. And they're not all going to be from Saskatoon and Regina, but there's going to be a real migration west. And what are we going to do with them? What are we going to do? How are we going to plan for them? We're going to think about the water they need, the sewage treatment they need, the space, the houses, the infrastructure in terms of transportation. So, these are real challenges. But again, this one map gives you an idea of the diversity, the size, and also the complexity. And here are the First Nations that you see here. They're circled here in, in green. Again, amongst the First Nations, there's a great diversity and also size. Now, talk about people. People are our strength of the CRD, and we have quite a number of employees, highly skilled, dedicated workforce of 1,100. But we really could not support the work that's done in the CRD without volunteers. And 1,600-plus volunteers are assisting. And I know my community is very similar in Oak Bay, and I'm sure Sook is, too, that you rely on people coming forward to volunteer of their time, and we're grateful for that. And a lot of, now, I often ask Bob, I think he's answered this question a number of times, there are 60 commissions from, what is some of the range, Bob, that, that we see some of the volunteers sitting on?
You're ranging all the way from advisory commissions, like you with Advisory Planning Commission, to local service commissions for small user groups that have senior water systems, right up to our larger recreation and wastewater, liquid waste commissions. Some of the bigger ones are the Regional Water Supply Commission and the Water distribution Commission, which both have a fair amount of delegated power to basically implement operations and set capital spending unitments. So, they're all a wide variety.
Perhaps, sorry, I just interrupted. What we'll do is we'll pass the portable microphone over, so that way, it's just the way our web testing technology works. It's way, when you speak into the microphone, the folks at home can be included in receiving that message.
Where are the folks at home?
Right behind you.
How many people are watching, do you think?
Everybody.
You should have told me that, because I have a very shiny spot back here. It's quite an embarrassment. Now, I'm going to have to stand more like this. We don't have this, this hasn't come to Oak Bay yet. We're looking at something similar, though it is a good way to, to do. Now, executive leadership team. We are so fortunate to have a highly skilled, experienced, and dedicated group to be the leadership here. And the first person, and, and the first night, they didn't sit in the right order, but look at this, eh? Right? They're pretty good. This is, what is this, the fourth, I think, fourth community? We're going to do all 13. And I'm going to be asking them each in turn to say a little bit about what they do. And then, certainly, if you have any questions, and we'll, we'll talk about their portfolios as we go through. And so, Bob is the Chief Administrative Officer. He's had many years' experience, decades of experience. And he joined, joined us in 2006. In fact, he joined us as Kevin, actually. So, this was his original role when he came down from the NIMO. And the year before last, he applied for and was chosen to be the CAO. Incredible amount of experience. And what are the kind of things, Bob, that, that you cover?
Great, as with your, this should be the mic. I'll tell you what, who's sitting over in that chair there? And just, was there a lack of a team, team effort? I'll jump up.
Yeah.
So, just, oh, it's working now, is it? All right. Sorry. So, as we are CEO, CAO, I report to the board directly and ensure the board's policies and objectives, major priorities are implemented through the CRD. One of the jobs that's quite complex is we have a lot, a lot of different divisions and service areas. So, we focus a lot with the executive leadership team on ensuring alignment between the board's primary policy and objectives and making sure that is implemented across those departments. We're also focused on core services like legislative services in terms of information sharing. My area involves the human resources function, communications as well, that are all circled around executive services and provide support to the whole organization. So, in terms of outreach through the various programs, we're involved in setting service plans and reporting those up to the board when we set service levels or various sub-program expectations.
Why don't you just, just, well, just to pass, we're going to do something a little different here. Just pass it down, say a little bit about, this is Diana Loken, about your background and, and what your portfolio is and what your area of expertise. And this is, by the way, Diana has to look after all the accounting for 200-plus services. And Bob mentioned the water. There's 13 communities there. But some, we have sub-regional, where there's a handful. We have, we have one Royal McPherson Theatre. One of the theatres is all Victoria, and the other theatre, there's Oak Bay, Sandage, and, and Victoria on that one, and trying to separate everything. So, go ahead, Diana.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So, I'm, I'm in, well, I'm a certified management accountant, and I head up the Finance Department, also Information Technology, GIS, facilities, real estate, arts development, and some odds and sods as well. And, and not part of my job at the CRD, but I'm a trustee on the Municipal Pension Board, so if anyone has any questions about that, I'm available for that. And support Bob and the Chair and all the members of the board and the others, and the other departments.
And make sure these ledgers are understandable and, and I've noticed the writing on this is just wonderfully neat. Not what I remember from my days, that's when I used to do my own books as a lawyer 25 years ago. Good.
Good evening. My name is Larissa Hutchison. I'm the General Manager of Parks and Environmental Services. So, on the park side, that includes regional parks, all 30 regional parks, and we're going to be getting into a little bit more about the details of our regional park system tonight, as well as community parks in the electoral areas of the Wanda Fuka, as well as on the Gulf Islands. I'm also responsible for our two recreation centers, so of course, Sea Park, located here in Sook, as well as Panorama Rec out on the Peninsula. On the environmental services side, I spend a lot of time with liquid waste management planning, both for the core area as well as for the Sanits Peninsula. I'm responsible for solid waste management, so long-term solid waste management planning. We operate the Heartland Landfill. We provide the curbside blue box program, all of our waste diversion programs and depots. I'm also responsible for environmental programs, whether it's stormwater quality monitoring, which we do do here in Sook, potable water quality monitoring for Ted's area in Integrated Water Services, harbors. We also have environmental outreach and education as part of our department.
And she also does wear an engineer's ring, I know, it's just like I do. We're both chemical engineers, but also environmental, right?
I'm registered as an environmental engineer, yes.
Ted? And just before, actually, just give it back to Larissa for a minute. One of the things I want to just, if you could just mention about the, one of the things that the CRD prides itself is, is continuing to renew itself and look for innovative ways to work effectively and efficiently. And a number of years back, Larissa was in Environmental Services, but now it's Parks. So, just take us through a little bit about the thinking that went through in terms of joining those departments.
Sure. So, several years ago, we had another member of our executive team, Lloyd Rushton, you may recall Lloyd. He retired. He was the General Manager for Parks and Community Services at the time. And we pulled that department together with Environmental Services and then took Lloyd's position and applied it out to regional parks where we needed to increase the horsepower at the management level out at regional parks. Some other things that we've been doing in our department, and Ted's going to speak a little bit, I think, to the bringing together of the sewer and the water side, is bringing all of our environmental programs, whether they be outreach program-based or regulatory-based, into one division within my department. So, we're trying to achieve a one window approach for business for environmental regulations, as well as integrated messaging around our environmental messaging to the community.
Okay. And Ted is next. Now, Ted, I also, if you wouldn't mind speaking to the issue again, we had a situation where, for years, we had a standalone Regional Water Supply Commission and a department that went with it. So, that's the freshwater side. And then, we had another side, which was the water outside, the flushing the toilet side and all that. And then, some years back, as, as the trend in other communities was, was to say, well, we should look at it, this more holistically, so we should look at water in and water out. And so, Ted, speak about the thinking that went into joining that department, which you're now head of.
Certainly so. Good evening. Ted Robbins, General Manager, Integrated Water Services. So, first of all, just speak about the role of our department. So, we're primarily responsible for the operation and engineering, delivery of capital projects associated with the CRD's water and wastewater utilities. So, that includes regional-level utilities, like the Regional Water Supply Service that Nils mentioned. Also, sub-regional services, like the Wanda Fuka Water Distribution Service, which of course, your community participates in. That includes the Sandage Peninsula Water and Wastewater Services as well as another example of sub-regional services. And then, right down to 18 small water and wastewater utilities that we operate across the three electoral areas, all the way from Port Renfrew out to the Outer Gulf Islands. The smallest service that we operate, for example, has 16 customers on Salt Spring Island, so a huge range in the, the scope of those utility services with very differing needs, obviously, depending on the size of the service and the location. Back in 2010, as Nils mentioned, through Service Delivery Review, the decision was made to integrate the water and wastewater operations and engineering functions, and that really created the Integrated Water Services Department. And that was really to take advantage of the fact that previous to 2010, we had, for example, electricians in our operating units that were only dealing with wastewater utilities, and the same on the water side. And it only made sense to integrate those services and gain the efficiencies of having our tradespeople and our operators and our engineering staff working on both water and wastewater utilities.
All right. And Kevin?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a little bit about myself. I'm the newest member to the executive leadership team. I've been with the CRD 10 months now. I've got 26 years' experience, about half of that's within local government and the other half in private industry. And I am also a chemical engineer, so we're taking over, taking over the local government, the CRD here.
That's right. One government at a time.
And I also have a Masters in Business Administration. Previously to this position, I was up in the Comox Valley in a, in a general manager role, and I've also had some experience with Metro Vancouver. That rounds out that, that local government piece. Looking at my portfolio, General Manager of Planning and Protective Services, from the planning side, I do the, or I have the planning for the Wanda Fuka, looking at land use planning for that large green area on the map that Nils was pointing out. And also, building inspection for the three electoral areas. And then, the regional and strategic planning. And regional and strategic planning, that includes the regional growth strategy, which Sina is going to be speaking to with, with the update that we're in a draft form tonight with the Regional Sustainability Strategy. We also have the regional information systems within that group, which does the data modeling and some of the transportation initiatives that we're, that we're working out of that department on. And also, the, the board's strategic planning process falls within that department as well. Moving to the protective services side, that covers the, the regional responsibility for 911, the emergency management and the fire depart, like the fire department, fire dispatch. We have, we're responsible for the 11 fire departments within the electoral areas. I know, we also have the bylaw and animal care. We do have a contract with Sook for the animal care provision. We also have the Capital Regional Housing Corporation, where the largest nonprofit housing provider in the region. And then, the, the Capital Regional Hospital District, and that includes our health and capital planning strategies, looking at providing new, or working with VHA on new healthcare facilities, as well as administering our public health bylaws, like the Clean Air bylaw and the Tattoo bylaw. And then, finally, rounding it out, the Housing Secretariat, which is the affordable housing spectrum on, on the housing continuum. We administer the Regional Housing Trust Fund and, and the Greater Victoria Coalition to End Homelessness.
Thank you very much, Kevin. Now, Sina Bay, her picture is not up here, but she came to us from the Kelowna area. Sina's a planner who has a very critical role to play over the next year or two, and that has to do with the Regional Sustainability Strategy. So, Sina is the Regional and Strategic Senior Planner for the CRD. And Sina, a little bit about what you're doing in, in that role? And Sina's going to come back at the, as she struggles with the microphone, she's going to come back and, and, and talk about the RSS, but just give us a highlight here.
Thank you. So, as Kevin mentioned, the regional strategic plan is, is one of the items in my department's portfolio. What we're doing with that, we're currently in the throes of getting public input on the, on the draft strategy, and I'm here to talk to you about that tonight. My background, as was mentioned earlier, is I'm a professional planner. I have my Master's Degree in Community Planning from School of Community and Regional Planning in Vancouver. Have experience working in the private sector in Calgary, as well as doing some work in Vancouver and Kelowna. So, I'm a fairly new recruit to the region here, having spent just over a year in, in this region.
Thank you, Sina. Those are our people. Now, I'm going to tell you about some of the things that we look after. One is, we'll go through these fairly quickly, is the regional infrastructure. And it's a significant role that we play. You can see here the, the amount of properties, nearly 900 properties or parcels of land that the CRD owns, and the, the size of that holding, and also, all the right-of-ways that we have to administer. Regional infrastructure also includes affordable seniors residences like this one, dams, docks, bridges, and what Kevin was mentioning, the Capital Regional Housing Corporation, a number of complexes, and of course, buildings. How many buildings do we have, Bob? Other than I can just remember lots.
600 buildings with a million square feet. So, in terms of the housing corp, there's 45 structures with 12,860.
Okay. The, the regional infrastructure also includes pipes, lots and lots of pipes. If you lay them in, and 750 kilometers worth of pipes, and they have to be maintained and looked after, serviced, repaired, if they, the shift in the, the earth. Again, it gives you a size, gives you a sense of the size of the operations of the CRD. And this is what Kevin was talking about, Emergency Management Services, fielding over, well, 100,000 911 calls. And we have lots of volunteers to help us, and we look after 11 electoral fire departments. And, oh, and the hazmat, right, Kevin?
Yes.
Tell us a little bit about the hazmat, because that's a regional resource that's housed in Central Sandage, correct?
Yeah, and that, the picture on the slide is the inside of our hazmat truck and trailer unit. And there's a coordinated response through the many fire departments when there's a call-out, and that, that really does provide a most efficient response to a hazardous material spill, spill in the region.
But, and this, what this speaks to, though, is, is the, and for those of you who may have been up recently to the LGLA, Leadership Academy's kind of training session up in Parksville, there was quite an elaborate and detailed presentation about the, the strengths of regional districts and the raison d'etre, if you will. And, and this is a good example where, you know, in Oak Bay, we wouldn't be able to have something, this kind of service. And, but by working together, we have access to that. I mean, much like, I suppose you can say, the Regional Water Supply Commission, we don't have a pond in Oak Bay where we can draw our water. We need to rely on the, on the partnerships with our other adjoining communities, so. Housing system was something that we can all be very proud of. We have, you can see the number of family units, over 900, over 300 single units. And I had the great pleasure of coming out here with her worship, Mayor Tate, and helping launch the McCola House, Hope House, and it was just, but that shows, again, the sense of partnership. And I know the CRD was quite a funder in that, and that levered other funding agencies to come in. And it was just, it's a wonderful addition to the, the housing stock for where it's needed, although that's not a, that's, McCola House Society is not us, we contributed to it. But it gives you an idea of what can be done in partnership. So, Kevin, I know this represents three different eras of housing, but these are all the CRD part of that system, CRHC. Tell us a little bit about the differences between these three.
Sure. This represents three of our 45 properties. We, we do have properties in seven municipalities, although the majority of those are in Victorian Sandage. Looking at the, the far right, this really shows how the funding has changed from decade to decade. And that Fergrove Complex in Esquimau was developed in 1986 under the federal CMHC Funding Program, and that's no longer available today. We, we do operate that under a number, our, sorry, under an operating agreement that goes out till, till 2021. And the split on that one, there's about 70% low end of the market rent and 30% subsidized rent. Looking at the Heron Cove photo in the middle in North Sandage, 1993, so about seven years later, we're now into the area of, era of the BC Housing Funding. We do have this one at 100% subsidized rent, and the BC Housing Program no longer provides funding to new developments. So, when you actually shift towards the Virgo property on the far left in 2012, that, that's really shows how municipalities can work together and still contribute towards affordable housing, what, when the senior levels of government funding is, is drying up. And that one was, was developed with a contribution from the Regional Housing Trust Fund, as well as a donation of land from the, from the Capital Regional Hospital District. In addition, the, the project in the middle was one of the BC Housing Properties that was recently acquired by the regional district. And I, I can just turn it over to our CAO, Bob, who can provide a little bit of detail on that, on that, that acquisition for, for the council's benefit.
Yeah, and, and this was a recent announcement, just within the last week. And at, at one point, the CRD owned the building and someone else owned the land, but that's been sorted out recently for a lot of the properties. Bob?
That's correct. The province decided to make those lands available to nonprofits, including the Housing Corporation. And so, we were able to buy the property based on the encumbered value. So, with, with us owning the building on the land, it brought down the purchase price of the land. It's still significant at $10 million. The valuation is about $38 million on the land, though, from an assessment point of view. More importantly, it allows the Housing Corporation to consider redevelopment opportunities, to take the total portfolio and manage that as, under an umbrella, and invest capital where it's most appropriate and decide how to get the best out of those properties in terms of additional housing units. So, that's more of the, the significance of that.
And certainly, providing these kind of affordable housing opportunities is one of the priorities of the, of the region. And, and, but it also, it also is a good illustration of the innovative approach that we're taking. When this, when these properties and this program became available, you know, we bought $38 million of property for $10 million. Again, because we have the staff that's able to, to look for these opportunities and work with the other levels of government, we're, we're able to take advantage of that. Staff pointed out to me, this, we had a presentation- Staff pointed out to me, we had a presentation this morning, that I sure like to talk about water. And I do. I was the head of the Water Commission for 12 years, the chair there. But this is a, this is a really important aspect of the service that the CRD provides, and I think another good illustration of the good work that's been done. And the vision, you can see here, this is Ted's area, this is the Suk Reservoir. If you haven't, have you been up in that area? Yeah, because if you, May, the first week in May, we put on bus tours, and you can go up there, and it is fantastic. It's pristine. This is where we draw our water supply, and it's about seven kilometers. It's very narrow here, but in some areas, it's as wide as a kilometer, kilometer and a half. And this is the Southern Intake Tower. This is the third, this earthen dam here, just on the front, is the third dam. 1915 was the first dam that was put up. And the people who put it up, in those days, it was just Victorian Esquiremont looking for water, and actually, Oak Bay and Sanage had been incorporated by then, too. But, and then it was, this dam was raised in 20, no, so 1970, and then again in 2023. But this is the last time, really, it can be raised, just given the topography there. But, and this dam was open just about the same time, I think, that the Suk Water Line was built, or at least launched, in 1915. And you can see it's significant operation. This is the ultraviolet operation. At one point, it was one of the biggest, if not the biggest, in North America. It only lasted for a month or so to be the head of that, because so many other communities came on stream, using the same, it's kind of a reuse of the UV technology, it's been around a long time. So again, lots of responsibility there to ensure that we keep 11 dams, six reservoirs, that we keep everything running. And this is something that, again, we can all be proud of. You can see a little map here. That photograph I showed you was this lake right there, which is the Suk Lake Reservoir. And the watershed, which is in Suk, is now owned 97% by CRD. We realized that with those 100,000 people coming to our area, we're going to need more water at some point. So in 2007, the immediately adjoining watershed came up for sale by a timber company. You can see how it's, this has been logged for 100 years, but we were able to acquire that for future use. The interesting thing is, when I first became Chair of the Commission, 1999, we thought we'd need another water supply by 2023, but the programs that the CRD has had in place in terms of water conservation have been so successful now. It didn't hurt that we had the big water drought scare in 2001 that woke people up. That was, that was the start of very good practices by the CRD residents. And also, too, some of the programs, low-flow toilets, incentives and stuff. So over the last 10 years, the area of Greater Victoria has grown 7%. In that same time, water use has dropped 24%. But again, it's because we're out there. It's because the CRD, I think, was one of the first, if not the first, community to pass regulations to do with low flow. And we had to go to the province, we had to work with them to have that, that all new developments had to have new flow, low flow. Now, of course, I think, Ted, it's right across the province now, is it? It's a...
Yeah, in fact, that's reflected in the building code, of course, and industry has moved to only providing low-flow appliances and high, or high-efficiency appliances, low-flow fixtures.
And the CRD was on the leading edge of that. We saw that. And we also saw the need. Now, we don't necessarily need a water, a new water source until 2050, but we're there, we're ready for it. In the meantime, this will all be reforested. You see our regional parks that Larissa was talking about, highly visited, 6 million visits a year. Look at all the activities, 26 different, 100 work, 2,600 different hikes and walks and organized workshops. It really is, we're really the envy of a lot of other communities. These are where the parks are located, in this green area here, and certainly fortunate to have this park system very close to your community. And we see that we also maintain these great tourist attractions called bike trails, which are huge in terms of tourism and economic infusion into our community. This is the Regional Waste Water Management. Now, I appreciate you guys are out of this game, but you need to know about it, because it does, it does, and will in the next year or two, take up a lot of energy at the CRD, but again, give you an idea of the complexity of the sewer system in the seven core communities and the two outfalls. But it does, it does have an impact on your residents, in the sense that those pollutants that are now going in there will, as soon as we get that treatment plant built, wherever it might be built, will come to an end. So we can be glad for that. Solid waste management. Now, again, this is an award-winning landfill. This is, comes under Larissa's management, and she has some great managers that look after this. Here, you can see the number of blue box areas we have, the number of the tons that are delivered each day. But what you don't see here is that the programs that have been in place for many years now have diverted 50% of our waste from this. And that's important, because nobody has volunteered a new site for a landfill. And this landfill has got a limited life, but the more we can extend it, the better off we are, particularly economically, because the next one's going to be very expensive. I'm just going to ask Larissa to talk about the recovery, resource recovery that goes on in this area.
So what Chair Jensen is referring to there is, we actually have a power generation facility up at the landfill. It's been in operation for 10 years now. As the organic material in the landfill decomposes, it produces landfill gas. We draw that landfill gas out of the landfill, direct it to a power generator, and we have a direct contract with BC Hydro and sell green power to BC Hydro. So we have a power plant producing 1.6 megawatts, and it's enough to power 1,600 homes.
Yeah, and again, we're innovative. I mean, there's others in Canada that do this, but certainly, we're on the leading edge of a lot of that. And the other thing that we do, too, is really encourage recycling. And now, this is a picture from up at the Heartland, where you can, it's just about anything you can imagine can be recycled up there. And this is the website that was developed, myrecyclopedia.ca, everything you ever wanted to know about recycling. But even with that, we do engage our communities. Look at how many hotline inquiries that we had last year. 55,000 people were interested in recycling issues and blue box issues. We have tours. This is, this is a picture from inside the, there's a kind of a building, what would you call it, kind of an education center?
It's actually, it's a recycled house that we've, that we have as an education center.
I told you, you can recycle everything. There you go. Where did it come from?
Actually, I don't, I think it might have come from Langford, but we actually had a woman come up to the landfill one day. She recognized it as the home she used to live in. That was my house.
But inside there, it's an education center. And this far wall, if you haven't been up there, take a trip up. Again, there's an open house once a year, usually in the fall, I think, Larissa?
We've typically had them in June or September, every two years.
And the one wall just is a cutaway. It's very hard to see here, but in front of these kids, it's a cutaway showing what's under the ground, and the piping that's under the ground, the way we catch leach aid, the way we capture the gas. And it's fascinating. So go up and take a tour. It's absolutely wonderfully interesting, as far as landfills can be interesting. And we have some kind of special bird to keep away the not-so-special seagulls. So they've even thought of that. So again, but this is, this is something that ties into, we're going to come back and talk a little bit about the diversion. One of the challenges will be, what are we going to do with kitchen scraps? Because we're at 50%, now diversion, and we need to get further. Whether we'll make zero waste in our time, I don't know. I don't think so, not in our lives, but we're heading in that direction. We do lots of monitoring, testing. This is Larissa's area, and you can see the water. We have 35,000 tests, this is from the fairly modern lab, I think it's about 10 years or so, something in that order of magnitude, just on, in the View Royal or on the Island Highway, the Old Island Highway. And we test for over 300 bad things, or some of them are good, I guess. But all kinds of other monitoring that goes on, and making sure it's safe. We also look after, and it was touched on by Larissa, a variety of, we look after libraries, theaters, and other recreation centers and pathways. So it's a very complex region. And this is going to be our pride and joy. Larissa, talk a little bit to this, because this is the Sea-to-C Regional Park Reservoir. Or, of course, they can't see that, a reserve, I should say. It is absolutely stunning.
So this, of course, you'll be familiar with this park reserve here in Suk, and it's just shy of 4,000 hectares. We purchased it over about a decade, between 2000 and 2010 or so. Mount Manuel Quimper, Grassy Lake, Shields Lake. We're hopeful that we can open this park this year. We're looking to having some backcountry camping as well happening in the Sea-to-C, so it's something that we're, we've got in the budget, and we're working forward to, looking forward to having this reserve open.
And I think your worship is going to be part of that whole Parks Committee. So that'd be very exciting things. Pardon me?
No, that is correct, yes, thank you.
Okay, so here's two challenges I'm going to talk about. One, again, this doesn't affect you directly, but it affects you indirectly as part of the community. A lot of time is going to be spent on core area wastewater. I showed you this before. This is the downfall at McCauley, this is the downfall at Clover Point. But just to give you an order of magnitude of what we're dealing with here, this is a municipal pipe, carry-away wastewater, it's about the size of a dinner plate. This is what we're dealing with in the region, the size of a smart car. Not that I advise you driving in it, but this gives you an order of magnitude sense. And that's why this complexity of pipes and everything down here is not that easy to sort out, and that's why we're struggling with solutions as best we can. Even on the west side, that you've heard about over on this side, where there's four communities, even this trunk line up here on the right comes in from Victorian Sanage, and it comes through an downfall on the west, quote-unquote, west side. And that adds an order of complexity, which is, we're still trying to work on. What is really at stake here is these pots of money that were, been offered. So the whole project is about $788 million, with an M. And the federal government up here has given us three pots of money with these dates, so you can see they're not far off. And then the provincial has given us that part of money, or has offered that pot of money. Again, they have a fairly tight timeline, given the magnitude of this. So this will be something that will occupy a lot of staff time, a lot of attention over the next year to two years as we sort this out. This is another challenge that we're facing, has been in the news quite a bit recently, and that's the regional kitchen scraps processing. You can see the size of the issue here, that this is annually how much kitchen scraps we've estimated goes into the landfill. If we can take that out of the landfill and divert it, gives us, then we'll have 60% to 65% waste diversion from our landfill. But there's lots of issues. And so one of the issues is proximity. We're looking at, we, as a matter of principle, we want to process kitchen scraps in or near the region. There's issues as to ownership. Do we do this through strictly private or some kind of private and public? The choice of technology, which actually goes with odor control up here, too, odor management, very important issues. And we certainly saw in the last year or so how a malfunctioning composting facility really affected the neighbors. We're looking at how much it'll cost, and what are we going to do with the end product? So where are we in this, Larissa, again, as part of your area?
That's correct. So we went out for requests for expressions of interest late last year, and they've come back. We're working with municipal staff and councils who collect kitchen scraps to take a look at those and shortlist that. Working through our Environmental Services Committee and up through the board, we'll be evaluating what our criteria will be for an RFP, and then go out to the marketplace for an RFP in the next couple of months, and hopefully have a preferred proponent by the end of spring, early summer.
And these are two big challenges. The other big challenges, you all, you have to remember that the region has to be run all while this is going on, right? Those pipes I showed you have to be in good order, the water has to keep flowing, the sewage has to keep flowing. We have to keep the day-to-day business of maintaining it while dealing with these, some of these very large and challenging issues. So that's why we're so fortunate to have such accomplished staff. Now, the next one is that one, Regional Sustainability Strategy. And just to give you a little bit of background before I turn it over to Sina, and that is, you may recall, and you may even have worked on, the Regional Growth Strategy, which is now in place to bring together our communities. And that had a number of topic areas that we'd agreed on as a region, managing and balancing growth, environmental and resources, housing, which is something we talked about, it's a priority, transportation, how you get people all around, and of course, economic development. That's not going to change, that's going to be carried forward into the Regional Sustainability Strategy, and then we're going to add some of these other themes, or some people might call them lenses, that will guide us forward. So with that, then, I'm going to turn things over to Sina. And following her, there'll be, Diana will take over, so.
Just while we're switching here, are there any questions from council on what's been presented? Both councillors, Rick Casper and Bev Berger, have sent their regrets, but we'll get them a copy of the materials that you've provided this evening, so they have...
Or they could come down, and I can give them the same presentation.
I'll advise them, maybe they can attend one of the other council meetings that you'll be hosting.
That's right, they could show up, yeah.
Any questions from councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Chair Jensen, and congratulations. And I was thinking, I was going to save some of my bad jokes for when you got here about transplanting deer out here or something, but, no, thanks for the presentation, and there's lots of things, and there's always the questions that I get asked in the public, you know, and maybe to Ted, and I met Ted, because I sit on that One Ifuka Water Supply Commission now. The number one question we get asked is, you know, you're promoting saving water, we save water, and then you charge us more. Yep. So my question is to, is through Ted, or through you to Ted, is the, or through you, I don't know who it's going through, but anyways. Is the water supply, is it self-sustaining, from a taxpayer's point of view? All the revenue that you sell the water for, does it actually support the water supply in itself?
Yeah, so the water supply budget is based on utility rate model, and so that's one thing that's unique about regional districts, as opposed to municipalities, in terms of the funding structure, is that all the revenue raised within a particular service is used entirely to fund the operation of that service. So our annual budget for regional water supply, for example, is about $28 million. All of that money is raised through the sale of water, bulk water, and all of that $28 million is used to fund the service. So in case the Regional Water Supply Service, about 50% of our annual budget is related to debt servicing, and about 50% of the debt servicing is related to the purchase of the leach. So that's just to give you a sense of kind of some of the budget split there, but no different with regional, or the One Ifuka Water Distribution Commission, where again, all the revenue raised through the sale of water through that service is directly used to fund the service.
So the taxpayers, then, when they ask the question, because they ask that question, is, so we can say it's zero, it's zero budget, or zero finance budget, I guess is the way I would like to say it. And the other part of the taxpayer, the other part of the tax bill that we pay to the CRD doesn't fund the water supply.
No, that's correct.
Perfect. So I also have a question.
Let me just jump in on that one, too.
Okay, okay, that's good. Okay, okay, that's good.
I get asked that all the time. And there is truth to that, in the sense that the more water we save, because we've got to raise X amount of dollars every year to sustain that. But you have to, you have to look at the cost in a longer picture, right? So yes, you're going to pay a little bit more. I still think that most of our water bills are probably cheaper than our cable bills. And I don't know which is more important to sustain life, cable or water. I don't know. But people don't put it in that context. But be that as it may, that when I came on in 99, about maybe four or five years prior to that, they'd done some long-term planning, that potentially the next water source that comes on, which will be now the leach, will have to be filtered. One of the things we don't do, we don't filter our water. So we have ultraviolet light, we have chlorine and ammonia, and we have the protected watershed. Those are really the three main barriers that we have to ensure clean water. If and when we, well, it'll be when, I guess, when we bring the leach on, we may have to filter that. And in the mid-'90s, the estimated cost for a filtration plant was in the range of 200 million. That was 20 years ago. I don't know what it's like now, but it'd be more expensive, number one. Operating that plant was also very expensive. I think in those days, it was estimated to maybe be a million or plus a year. So yes, we're paying marginally more to avoid the huge costs. So if we can extend the life of that reservoir, maybe to 2060, 2070, there's a huge savings to be gained in terms of capital cost and operating cost. So there is good reason for that, so.
Thank you. One more question for Ted, is the supply, the water supply itself, and is it used, I guess, I get asked this question, is water supply used to control growth? When we talk about the regional growth strategy.
I can answer that one.
Okay, yeah, that would be, that would be the next question.
At one point, there were people who believed that that was the way to control growth. But if you speak to any person who has seen growth, people don't, when they move into Victoria area, the Greater Victoria area, they don't ask, what will the water supply be in 10 years? They ask, how much snow do you get? Or where are the jobs? And the migration is not going to stop. And you can't control it through water. And in fact, there was some suggestion that when, just before the Regional Water Supply Commission was created in 1997, 98, right around then, there was a group that stopped the raising of the reservoir, stopped the raising of the dam, for that very reason, because they thought that that was the way to do it. If we can just stop the reservoir from being enlarged, we won't have growth. Well, it's a fallacy. People are going to move in here regardless. So we have to manage the growth, and we have to be in a position where we don't run out of water. In 2001, because of the delay of the raising of the reservoir, we almost ran out of water. It'd be an economic disaster. We saw what happened in Tofino, where they were closing the hotels, canceling events, and that's the lifeblood of their economy. Can you imagine had we run out of water here? It would have just been a devastation. And so we can't afford to do that. So we have to plan. And then when we recombined, after the, we were reconstituted as Regional Water Supply Commission, we spent another million dollars to study it and came up with the same answer, and that was, you've got to have more water on hand, because you could have drought. Now, that's exacerbated by climate change. Because climate change, meteorologists tell us that you're going to have longer, hotter summers, where people are going to be out in their gardens and watering their vegetables, and you need that supply. You know, we're conserving ourselves to some more supply, yes, but there's a limit to that. So you cannot control it indirectly, despite what some people might believe.
Urban myth. I have one more question for Ted, sorry. It just became apparent to me, and I was thinking about this the other day, but it was the date of that dam, 1915, seems to be very coincidentally, very close to the date of the dam being built on the Jordan River. So any questions or answers around the structural integrity of our dam, of our water supply dam?
No, and certainly, as the Chair mentioned earlier, essentially, this is the dam we have now at Suuk Lake Reservoir, is the third iteration. So the original dam was constructed in 1915, raised again in about 1970, and then again in 2002, 2003. So at the most recent raising, it was designed and constructed to the seismic standards of the day, with all the added safety factors, so no concerns with the current dam in terms of seismic risk.
Excuse the pun, it's damn good. But the, that, when I showed that picture, there was, you saw the dam in the front. It's an earthen dam. It's not a, there is a concrete portion, but that earthen dam is one that will sustain a fairly sizable earthquake. The concrete spillway, which is a legal requirement to have, which was built in 2002, that might probably go first. I don't know if that's still the sense, Ted, that that rigid structure may fail first in a massive earthquake?
There is that potential, but again, it was all constructed, designed, constructed to the design standards of the day, yeah.
Councillor Ray?
Thank you. Just following up on councillor Pearson's questions. So in terms of the water and controlling regional growth, if that's sort of not where we're going, is that what I'm hearing? Because my concern is, we've had members of our community who just live up out of Point here, who have no water. And it seems that we've been told over the last couple of years that that's just not in the cards right yet. We have to sort of get in line. And I just think it's important for us to advocate that with, within our boundaries, that our community members should have access to water. I think that's a basic necessity.
And that was something that's determined by the Regional Growth Strategy. So for instance, for a long time, there's certain areas of the Highlands we don't supply to water. But again, that's trying to use water more or less as a, as kind of ensuring large properties in the Highlands, I would say, to put it in vernacular, and concentrating growth in certain areas and not in others. So, I mean, that's a policy decision that we make as a community, right, as a widespread community.
Right. It's just that in our OCP, it's important, and it's been noted there, that it is important to have all of our community on the water.
And Sina's going to talk about that integration. It's a perfect segue, unless there's other questions?
There's one more.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Councillor Parkinson?
In regards to that, there are a number of houses that are within our Regional Growth Strategy, when we worked on it back in 2008, that are in the area and still do not have water. So they're within our containment area. So would water be going to those homes?
And I was just going to say, in terms of the expansion of the Wanda Fuga Water Distribution Service, then it's really a commission decision as to whether or not the commission wants to invest in extending that infrastructure. In most cases, the infrastructure is extended based on development demand, in which case developers extend the system on a development-by-development basis, pay for that initial infrastructure, and then once it's in service, it's turned over to the CRD and becomes part of the Wanda Fuga system. Otherwise, if it's not driven by development, then it becomes a commission decision as to whether or not they want to invest in the extension of that infrastructure and fund that through the rates, et cetera.
Councillor Pearson, did you have another question?
Oh, yeah, I have a whole pile. Is there a time limit on, actually, questions for Ms. Hutchinson, Mr. Hutchinson. I'm confused about this garbage issue, kitchen waste. You know, we're looking for a site. Seems like we've got a beautiful one up there at Heartland Landfill. Why would we not use that as a site? And I've often wondered why we don't take our entire garbage up there, have somebody go through it. I mean, it sounds simple to me, but, I mean, and obviously, there's bigger plans in place. And then we could remove what is actually there, look for that recyclable material. I mean, we have to educate the public as much as possible. But why would we not make our composting facility up there? It's been asked to me many times, like, you know, it already smells bad up there, right? So.
It's a very good question. In fact, it might be, but go ahead.
So Heartland Landfill was identified in the Request for Expressions of Interest as a site. And then we went out further and said, if proponents have a site they want to bring to the process, they can do that. So when we go through the shortlisting process, we'll take a look at the proposals that have come in, and see if there's any sites that are outside of Heartland, and then move forward with that. So a decision hasn't been made definitively, Heartland or not, but Heartland is definitely in the mix.
Oh, okay. And the second part of that question is that I went online, I don't know, within the last month or something, and I looked at some of the towns in the US that are doing this. And they take all of their garbage to one place, then they have these people, they go on conveyors, and they have people pick out all the totally recyclable stuff. And one of the biggest things that they found was this non-biodegradable stuff, tires, garbage cans, garbage cans is an issue, actually, believe it or not, in the US, where people just throw their garbage cans into the thing. So there was all these things that they were able to recycle and do that. So do we have, I mean, obviously, you guys are engineers and things, but, this is a question.
So we don't have a MRF, that's called a MRF. And we don't, we don't manage our waste in that way. We have a really robust waste diversion program. And because we've got so many different places where that material is directed to, to process it, the system that we have in place, I think, is most efficient. As the province brings in further regulations, the BC Recycling Regulation, and introduces different stewardship programs, manufacturers are required to provide recycling opportunities. So the whole Blue Box Program, for example, is going to be industry-funded, is industry-funded now, as paper and packaging. And so that's just the way our industry has developed under the regulatory scheme, and with the landfill that we have, and the programs that we've had in place here in Victoria.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from councillors? Okay, thank you.
Okay, turn it over to you, Sina. Thank you.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to collaborate with you on the development of the Regional Sustainability Strategy. With the RSS now moving into more of a political realm, this is an opportunity for us to hear directly from you on your thoughts on the draft as it evolves. A great deal of planning is, of course, dealt with at the local level. Your municipality has clear directions for what you'd like to see happen in the future. Your OCP speaks to retaining the rural character, attracting development, strengthening and diversifying your local economy. And it makes it quite clear that you do not wish to use infrastructure servicing as a means to control growth. I think that topic has come up a couple times already tonight, but that you'd rather, prefer to see growth targeted to certain parts of your community. There, I see in your OCP a clear direction to become more of a complete community, and to serve really as a regional center for this part of the community. So that's a fairly, your OCP is unique to your community, and each municipality's OCP in the region is in fact, unique. But what's really interesting, when you start to look at all the OCPs in the region, is that there is also a fair bit of commonality with each of the OCPs. And some of the issues in your OCP, for example, economic development, food security, housing, infrastructure, environment, those are all topics that are also covered off in other municipal OCPs. And so those really start to speak to a regional interest, and that's part of what we're trying to do here, is, I'm not quite sure what happened here. With those issues being identified, those are really regional issues, and those are the types of issues that we're trying to address as part of our Regional Growth Strategy. So where there are regional issues, there's also the potential for regional cooperation to mutual benefit. And that's what we're trying to tease out through this process of working with each municipality, is to find out really what some of those regional interests might be. So the draft document does set out some ideas for discussion, and it's just that, ideas at this point. It is still very much a draft under discussion, so we have certainly had some early feedback through your CAO that we will take into consideration as we look at finalizing the document. It's quite clear, at this point of the process, is there's not yet 100% agreement on everything that's in that draft. So it will continue to evolve as we move through the final stages. That's really what we're going through now, in the process of broader engagement, to get ideas, to get thoughts and feedback on the document as it currently stands. It's important here to emphasize as well, you have a fair bit of control over this, as every single municipality needs to sign off on the document before it can become a bylaw. So it's not a majority rules type of situation. Once the Regional Growth Strategy is adopted as a bylaw, then there will be a requirement for each municipality to develop what's called a regional context statement. And that's really a series of words that's embedded in your OCP that speaks to the relationship between your OCP and the Regional Growth Strategy. In this case, we're calling it a Regional Sustainability Strategy. And what happens within that regional context statement is that you indicate how you, as a municipality, wish to relate to the Regional Sustainability Strategy. So really, I had an image up on a slide presentation that showed three gears that interrelated. And basically, what you had was, you had your OCP on one side, and you had the Regional Growth Strategy on the other hand, and then you had the Regional Context Statement in between. And really, when all those pieces are moving together effectively, you have a really powerful force for change. A strong OCP combined with an appropriate regional growth strategy really puts the gears in motion for positive change in the community. So that's what the process is about. In terms of coordinating the content of this, the document is structured around six key objectives. The first objective is reducing greenhouse gas emissions. We've been given clear direction from the board to make climate change the lens through which this review is undertaken. So that is one of the key objectives. Another key objective is looking at becoming more resilient as a region, because of course, that is the flip side of reducing our greenhouse gas emissions. We know that already the process is in place to make sure that there, to require that we also become more resilient in terms of issues like sea level rise and drought scenarios, and even some of the things that we were talking about earlier on, about taking anticipated, anticipating the changes in precipitation, and needing to make sure that our reservoirs can respond to that. Thirdly, the document also speaks to the need to manage growth in our region, and we talk about that really at a fairly high level. I'm just going to quickly speed through the. So now we're caught up in the slides and the presentation notes respond to each other. Land use matters are primarily dealt with at a local level, and those, your OCP, for example, goes into a lot more detail than we will ever speak to your local land uses in the Regional Sustainability Strategy. The RSS talks about land uses at a very, very high level, focusing on those matters that have truly regional impact. And I understand there's been some discussion, for example, in this community about the desire for a business center that's not seen reflected on the maps in the RSS. And we just simply don't go down to that level of detail, that is something that is within municipal control. Where we show employment centers in the RSS is really where there's a major regional impact. So something like Uvic, for example, will show on there, because it is a major employment attractor from across the region, and where there's significant transportation impact. So those, that level of intensity will be shown in the RSS, a local business center would not. So that just provides some example of the context. The mapping that's in the draft right now is there in response to feedback that we've had from each municipal council. So if we get feedback through this process here, that that's not exactly the way the municipalities want to see it, then that's something that certainly we can take under advisement as we move it through its final stages. We do talk about the different types of growth centers, rural centers, urban centers. I understand there's been some discussion about that in this community as well. We do have a rural center designated for Suuk, and I understand that there's been some desire to elevate that up to an urban center, and we've had some discussions on that, and it's certainly something that, based on the arguments that have been put forward, that certainly staff can support. So we will be advancing that. So we will be advancing that. Next objective is one of fostering well-being. We know that community well-being is about more than just building hospitals. It's also about the air we breathe, it's about good jobs, it's about walkable communities, and those are also regional issues. And so we included content as well on that. And the next objective is about enhancing our natural environment. The draft does include strategies to protect regional park space. We saw some stunning images earlier on about what some of those major regional assets are, and the RSS definitely speaks to preserving those, as well as looking at water quality and our natural resource base. Finally, moving on to optimizing infrastructure, we do want safe, clean drinking water, and we do want to make sure that our liquid and our solid waste is appropriately managed, and the draft speaks to each of those. The draft includes provisions to limit the extension of sewer services outside the growth containment area, and does also speak to providing for the extension of water services within municipal boundaries, as well as to east SUK and Port Renfrew and Otter Point in the Wanda Fuka area, in line with the OCP development limits that are in place at the time of adoption. So that's speaking to some of the infrastructure components. Now speaking to this slide, which shows really the six objectives feeding into delivery of the regional vision, which at this point has been drafted as, to speak to the tagline SHIFT 2038. 2038 is the time horizon of the RSS. SHIFT stands for Sustainable, Healthy, Innovative, Fair, and Thriving. And that's what we'd like to see in our community for 2038. And the intent of each of the objectives is to help us to deliver on that vision. We are now moving forward through the consultation process. This is the fifth community that we've presented to, at the council level. We're also out in the community with our displays, which are circulating around. We've got a number in this part of the community. We had one up at Sea Park last week with a certain amount of that staff. We also have displays up this week at the SUK Library until February 5th. And next week it'll be up at the Wanda Fuka Library at the Westshore Rec Center until the 16th. So certainly urge anyone interested in learning more to visit those displays. You can also go online to the CRD website to pick up information, to fill out a feedback form, and to obtain a copy of the draft. This very much remains a work in progress, so we're welcoming input from you and from your residents and from the region as a whole, and we thank you for the input that we've received to date. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the presentation. As I understand it, the online public survey would be open until February the 15th, is that correct?
That's correct.
And then the dates, now that you'll be at the library, is starting on February the 5th, or?
It will be on at the SUK Library from January 29th to February 5th.
Okay.
And at the Wanda Fuka Library from February 6th to 16th. And what we'll be doing with that input is we will be gathering up all the input we get, regardless of how we get it, whether it's one-on-one through these sessions, or whether it's from the feedback form online, or whether it's phone calls that come in, or it's emails that we get, or whether it's from the committees that we're meeting with as we move through this process. We will be packaging all that up and providing that information to the CRD Board in April as part of seeking direction from the Board as to how the documents to be finalized in anticipation of moving it forward as a bylaw.
Okay. We have received the one letter from a member of the public that has been passed on to Ms. Bay already. Any questions or comments from councilors? Thank you, I suppose, as it unrolls. We are, we do have our strategic planning session scheduled for February 13th, and our CAO will be in contact if there's, at any time, any outcomes from there that should be brought to your attention as well. Thank you for the presentation. Pardon me if you could just press the red button on the handset.
Ah, okay, got it, thanks. So Larissa's just passing out what we call CRD on a page, and the version that you have is specific to SUK. And I'm just going to go over briefly how to read the document. And just before I do that, I'll just give a little more context on the financial environment at the CRD. So our operating budgets are around $250 million. The capital budget is around $117 million. On our five-year capital plan, we're looking at over $1 billion. And as a regional district, as opposed to a municipality, there was a little bit of discussion about this earlier. Every one of our services, the revenue and expenditures stay linked. So when we raise money for a service, that money stays in the service. And we also have to account for assets and liabilities independently by service as well. So there is a lot of detailed work there. So the document you have lists down the left-hand side all of the services of the regional district. And across the top, we have the municipalities, and then we have the electoral areas. Now, as Ted, I think Ted mentioned earlier, we have small services, even down to the 18-lot subdivision, for water. So for the electoral areas, we have two columns, one where the entire electoral area participates, and another where there are subsets of the electoral area. If the municipality, in this case, we know it's SUK because the background, because it says it's SUK, and there is a column that is blue down the whole document that makes it easier to follow SUK down, looking at the various services that you participate in. For every service that you participate in, the name has been greened, and all of the participants, their field is green as well. So you can see, if you're in the service, you can see all of your participants, and the numbers that we've used here are numbers that we have. So they're the requisition. So it's not the budget for the service, it's the amount of the service that gets taxed, and it's the apportionment amongst the various municipalities. Where it's a fee, like regional water, when you get down there, you'll see that it's zeros, and that's because there is no tax, and we needed something to trigger putting green in the field to indicate participation. So the first group of services, we've grouped under what's called direct responsibility. That means there isn't a commission or a delegated committee that's looking after those services with staff. So you'll actually find that your SUK Regional Museum is in there, and that's because you and the electoral area put that, agree on that budget. We work with the regional museum, and it goes directly to the Board. There isn't an intermediary there. The next group of services are called, we've called mandated, and typically there is some document or some authority where the Board is in a service and is mandated to carry on work. So that's where we have sewer, we have liquid waste management plans for that, solid waste management plans dictating what happens with solid waste. And also, we have to remediate an old septic facility, so that's included in there as well. The following group is, we've grouped contractual and emergency services. So those are services where the, that's where you'll find Crest and Hazmat and Call Answer. Additionally, we have a couple of theaters there where we contract the operation out. And the Family Court Committee, that's a group of volunteers where the Board funds the councilors' meetings that are on that, but not any actual servicing at the courthouse. The next group is, we call delegated responsibility. So you'll find Sea Park in here, and that's because there is a commission that the Board has delegated a considerable amount of authority to, to work with the staff in the administering and operating of that facility, of those facilities. And lastly, we have the sections for electoral areas. Now, you'll see that you're in there on a green line there for animal care services, and that's because the participants in that service for the actual establishment of the services are the electoral areas. You participate on a contract basis, so it's in the category where the actual service, named service participants are. At the very bottom, you'll see the total for, or close to the bottom, the total for the CRD. Then there's a line for MFA debt. Now, this is not a cost-shared service. The services previously have different kinds of cost-sharing, and generally, the group is in the service, so to speak. For debt, any of your long-term debt, you must go through the CRD, but it's your debt. You send us the documentation, and we process it and only charge you for the debt. And we work with the MFA and you in regards to that repayment. Next is the hospital district, same participant, same Board as the regional district, but operating under a different act. And at the very bottom, for those services where we have a zero for populating the spaces, to give you a flavor for the magnitude of those services, we've indicated the gross budget for them and the amount that's raised by fees and charges, just to give you a bit of a flavor for that. So in one page, it's the CRD services, the highlighted by the services in this case for SUK. And for the, all the white space that you see on the page, we're busy working on other services that other municipalities and electoral areas are receiving and paying for. So SUK is green, and the rest is other areas in the district. So I'll take any questions, and depending on the kind of question, the staffer will answer.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I received this at the CRD Board in orientation and put a copy into the council reader file that you might have seen, so it's helpful now for some context to be behind that. So thank you. Questions from councilors? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pardon me, it looks like Counselor Ray.
Thank you. I'm just wondering in terms of the Victoria Transit Commission, which, that doesn't go through the CRD, but members?
That's correct. It's not a CRD service. The CRD has a transportation service on Salt Spring that goes through Kevin that's on contract, but the CRD itself is not on the Transit Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So usually, we leave almost the final word to Bob, but I get the final word from this side, and your worship gets the final word from that side. So Bob, did you want to kind of wrap up and just kind of give us a bit of an overview?
Sure. We've covered off a lot of the new initiatives in the presentation, but we are working to enhance our reporting on financials with more work on asset management and reserves. So you'll see more work done to give a status of reserves, where we're at with the reserve balances, how that relates to the capital program, and what kind of resources we need to achieve full infrastructure replacement going forward. We're also putting a view up on the website that'll have capital projects going on around the region with a map view, so you can see where those projects are, what the status is, who the contractors are, and what the timeline is for those projects, which a lot of people are interested in knowing where that work is being deployed, as it's a large capital program. And finally, we're working on putting more information out routinely. We get a large increase in free information requests. So rather than trying to just build up on that, we're putting information out more proactively, working with people directly to satisfy the growing need for information about services and other kinds of activities we undertake. Just on that page, you might notice a big lift in the land banking and housing function. That question's come up before. That's an increase for that, purchase of that housing assets. And we offset or reduce the budget in the hospital district by an equal amount to allow for that borrowing to occur in land banking and housing. So it was managed or mitigated by a reduction in one area with an increase in another. So in that report, it'll show up as a significant increase, but it was offset by a decrease in another area. Okay, that's about it.
So it falls to me to thank you. Thanks for your attention. Really appreciate the time that you've allowed us. CRD is a service organization, shared service, and we want you to think of our staff as, not necessarily your servants in that sense, but people who are there to serve you and answer your questions. So we've gotten a yellow sheet that you have that has mine and all the senior staff's and Sina's numbers and how to get ahold of us. And if I don't know, I'll pass it over to Bob, or you might want to write directly, for instance, to Larissa if you have some landfill questions or whatever. So we're there to get that information to you and make you a better-informed council and mayor, because you will, as Counselor Pearson pointed out, often there's people who come to you and say, "Well, what about this about the CRD?" You've got a little bit of information here, there's a lot on the website, but our staff are also there to help you. And as I reiterated, I won't reiterate now, what I said before, is we're so very fortunate to have such a group of skilled administrators that look after this immense, complex, and diverse organization, and that's done so much good. Unfortunately, these days, a lot of judgment is done on the basis of, "Well, you can't get that sewer treatment, sewage treatment thing going." Yeah, that's true, but it's also $750 million, and there's going to be a lot of hiccups along the way for a project that size. And the diversity of the people that are in there, people have different views from the various communities. But bottom line is, we're here to provide the backup that you require, and our staff are more than happy to do that. So thank you very much, and appreciate the time, your worship and councilors. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair, and for everyone for coming out. I would also like to acknowledge and thank the members of the public who have attended this evening, and invite anyone present to ask any questions, or if there's any comments from anyone here.
Just, we've, the way we decided to deviate the questions if there was questions was, I get the easy ones. And staff get the hard ones. So we'll have to categorize the question first.
Okay. Any members from the public?
And I have, I think we have some extra PowerPoints if you want to have, kind of take away and share it with, if you're a community association or something like that.
Okay. If you do, if you don't mind coming forward to the podium, and please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Well, I'm Heather Phillips. I'm actually from the Otter Point subarea of the Wanda Fuka electoral area. But my family's been in the SUK area since 1961, and I brought my husband and daughters back to live here. I sent a letter in to SUK Council because two things struck me immediately, reading through the Regional Sustainability Strategy, and that is that our area, SUK, is not Westshore. And I think if the Regional Sustainability Strategy persists in thinking of us as being more similar to Westshore than different, it's going to affect planning for our area. I'll be 90 if I'm here in 2038. Port Renfrew will either be a viable center, or it will be a ghost town. I don't think it's preposterous for me to suggest that Port Renfrew be identified as a rural center, a small town. As I say in my letter, it has every feature of a town, it just doesn't have population. And we can't make it grow, but we shouldn't stop it either. When the Marine Trail Holdings business was so controversial, the problem was location. That resort type of development belongs in Port Renfrew, in the Port Renfrew OCP area, which should be expanded. I have a lot of thoughts on development in our area. I think it was interesting to me that I think it was interesting to me that timber harvest is not identified as an industry. It's, I've heard, I'm really happy to have been invited here by Bonnie Sprinklin. We did our Sunday School together many years ago. Like, our communities are integrated. Westshore and isn't SUK. SUK and Wanda Fuka are really similar. But I've lost my train of thought. One of the things that makes Wanda Fuka different is that it's 132,000 hectares, over half of the planning area is wilderness. Don't put that in with Westshore. And so on, and so on, and so on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips, and thank you for putting in the letter. I see that you've CC'd Director Hicks, so that he'll receive it. And I do agree that SUK is distinctly separate from the Westshore, and I think even the drive that you took out this evening sort of highlights that. It's just our geographic separation, and the character out here is different than what you find in those areas. So that is something that I'd like you to consider as you roll forward. And also just the comments about the Sauk First Nations and the others, and then that's part of the task force that the mayor spoke to earlier on, is bringing that piece in in terms of governance. So thank you for that. Anyone else in the public? Okay, on that note then, I'd like to give thanks to everyone for coming this evening, and to council for the participation. And on that, we'll just call for a motion to adjourn. Thank you.